Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Dania Beach Regular Meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is seven P M., and I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, if you would please call the role.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Romoli. Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Yavacorm.
Thank you, City Clerk. If we could now please bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. So sorry.
City Attorney, if you would please read our Statement of Decorum. Good evening, Mayor. Yes, I will. Individuals who wish to make any citizens' comments under that portion of the City Commission Agenda or who otherwise want to address the City Commission must first be registered with the City Clerk. The forms are available outside on the Commission Chambers and must be given to the Clerk before the meeting. Others who want to address the Commission on any matters must first be recognized by the Mayor. All such persons must use the podium in the Commission Chambers. No more than one person at any time may address the Commission from the podium. Comments are only to be made to the City Commission and are not to be directed to the audience or City Staff. No individual shall make any slanderous or unduly repetitive remarks or engage in any other form of behavior that disrupts or impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting as determined by the Mayor. The Mayor often allows applause during ceremonial or celebratory portions of the meeting, such as proclamations, presentations, awards, or public safety recognitions, as these are not action items and are intended to honor individuals or events. However, to safeguard an orderly meeting and to preclude intimidation of speakers on the agenda items or designated public comments, the Mayor ordinarily precludes clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts. Based upon the foregoing, no individual may speak directly to or address the Mayor, the City Commissioner, or City Staff. Comments are only to be directed to the Commission as a whole. No clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts in support of or opposition to a speaker or his or her remarks shall be permitted. No signs or placards shall be printed in the Commission Chambers. If any person's conduct, as determined by the Mayor, is found to be disruptive or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting, the person may be asked by the Mayor to leave the Commission Chambers. If the person does not leave and the conduct persists, the City Police Department will be requested to escort the individual from the City Commission Chambers. All cellular telephones are to be silenced during the meeting. All persons exiting Commission Chambers shall do so quietly. Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney. Next, we have Presentations and Special Event Approvals. We have Item three point one. The Blue Ridge Tree Farm Christmas Sale, the Trion Sound Bath Meditation, and the Rita Crockett Beach Sports Academy Grand Opening. Do we have it? Do I have your consensus for Item three point one? All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Okay, so Item three point one passes unanimously. Next, we have Item three point two. Freebie Presentation sponsored by Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Ryan. Is it wrong? Oh, wrong one.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, we have Claudia and Daniel here today. They're with Freebie. Uh, I'm sure that we've all gotten to know them throughout the years. We've met them before at different conferences, and they've met with us also and given us presentations. You know, there's basically two big players in the game here. I'm not going to mention the competition because we got Freebie in the house. And we are, you know, micro transit is something that is being utilized. It's been beneficial for other communities. And it's interesting to hear the program that they have to lay out for us. I know it, a lot of things can be tailor-made to our city. So you have the floor, Claudia, and thank you for coming out today.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ryan and Mayor, Madam City Manager, Clerk. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. It's Claudia Mero with Vice President with Freebie with offices at three seventy-one Northeast Sixty-first Street in Miami, Florida. I do have a presentation. Oh, there it is. You guys are so efficient. Just going to keep it very high level. We have had the opportunity with me to meet with some of you, and we will, are happy to do follow-up meetings one-on-one. If you have any more questions, I'm going to try and keep, like I said, this high-level and brief. But Freebie is the largest on-demand micro-transit company here in the state of Florida, currently operating in over fifty-two cities from basically central Florida all the way down to the Florida Keys. If you see that map that we have up there, that pretty much gives you a good idea of our footprint, really just taking over all of South Florida and a little bit of Central and actually working our way up. We also have contracts in Virginia and in North Carolina. Saying that to you, we are, there is no, there is no area that we cannot do, whether it's large or small. Every single one of those areas differs from the other. We are not a cookie-cutter solution. We're highly customizable. So every city decides how they want the service to operate, how many hours, where. All of that really based on your transportation, needs, your transportation goals for your particular city. So how it works, very simple. If you look at that, it is app-based, and when you open up the app on your phone, that is what you see right there. We're featuring my favorite, Jackson's Ice Cream. And so that center carousel, you're going to, you can promote local businesses from there, any local events, anything that you want to do. So the idea is, think of it as the, a combination of Rideshare meets Yelp, where you're able to request a ride by pushing a button, but you're also able to be connected to everything and anything that is happening right here in Dania Beach through that mobile platform. So think of it, the idea is really to just inspire those local destinations. And one of the things I really, my goal today is to highlight why Freebie is the number-one micro-transit provider in Florida, why we are, you know, superior to any of the competition that is out there. And so one of the things that I'd like to highlight is that we have a very powerful econo, we're a powerful economic development tool, where it's not just getting you from point A to point B, but we're also able to promote the local businesses. And how do we do that? We do that through our platform here. And so you're able to see, let's say you want to go have lunch. You're not sure where you want to go. You go to the destination section on our app, and you go to a section Restaurants and Bars. You're going to get a dropdown menu of every restaurant and bar within the service area. And that is free advertising that we are providing to the local business. It's free to them. It's a way for us to be good community service partners, and we do that for that reason. And also because we know that all these businesses are going to turn around and they're going to cross-promote us against all their platforms, and that's going to lead to high ridership. And that's important because, at the end of the day, all of you can turn around and say that you're being good stewards of the public dollar because your ridership numbers are so high, and that means your cost per rider is low. So that's basically there. And you see on the bottom banner there, you can also advertise any, any events that the city is having, or if you want to connect to a live transit tracker, maybe a bus or a rail, you can do that. We do have API capabilities. So, you know, folks can plan their ride from beginning to end, all from one easy-to-use Freebie app. Our technology is also superior. We invest millions of dollars every year in really tweaking our technology so that it's the best and it functions very well. We are not just a, we're a provider and an operator. So we do the software as well as do the operations side. So very simple, how to use the app. That first screen, you're hitting Request a Ride. To the second screen, where you're dropping your PIN. And then that third screen is your Where-to. You can say something as simple as Publix. And if you have more than one Publix in the dropdown area, you know, in the, in the area, you're going to get a dropdown, and you choose the one you want. Speaking of dropdowns, you see categories. That's what I was talking about, that Yelp side of the business, where you have restaurants and bars, salons, spas, arts entertainment, what have you. You can select from there, and you'll get that dropdown of all the businesses that we're doing that free advertising for. And on the last screen, you're going to say how many people are in your party to confirm your ride. This is also the section, by the way, that you can select your accommodations. Are you a wheelchair user? Do you need us to send you a wheelchair vehicle? You're going to let us know there. Maybe you're a mom that has a child, a toddler, a baby. You need a car seat or a booster chair? You're going to let us know there, and then hit your Confirm Ride button, and you can connect to your driver in real time. I should also mention that if, this is one way of requesting a Freebie. So if you're a senior, right? What if you're a senior and you're not tech savvy, or you don't have a smartphone? No problem. Seniors sixty-five and up can call our eight-hundred number, and a switchboard operator will say, hey, where are you? Where are you going? Great, the car will be there in fifteen minutes. Just like when you do with Rideshare, when you do the app, you're going to be able to see, you know, how many, where the car is in relation to where you are, how many minutes your wait time. It's going to give you a message if you have any rides that are being picked up or dropped off on your way. So all of that is to help manage your expectations so that you know when the vehicle is coming to you. And again, it's a quality wait because you're waiting inside your home or inside the place of business that you're patronizing. Economic Development, I already mentioned that. So once you contract with Freebie, what makes us different is that we have a team of Economic Development Officers that goes door-to-door to every single business, offering the free advertising that I've mentioned. Okay? And all of that is, like I said, helpful because we are not just going to those businesses and saying, hey, do you want free advertising? We're letting them know why this is going to be beneficial to their business. We're dropping off QR codes so they can stick them to the storefronts, the little clings. We're dropping them off at the concierge stands, at the hotels, at the hostess stands, at the restaurants, so that folks can download that. And so it's going to eliminate that, places that have limited parking availability. It's going to reduce traffic. It's going to really help create that connectivity and making Dania Beach into a place where you could live, work, and play, and not have to have, you know, a vehicle to move around. This is what that looks like, that free advertising I keep mentioning. That's what we'll do. There'll be a picture, a little blurb about the business, their phone number and address, and they have the opportunity to offer a Freebie deal and discount, which basically says, hey, if you'd come to my business riding a Freebie and leave your car at home, we're going to give you a discount for riding public transit, which Freebie is. Data collection, the other thing that sets us apart from our competition is that we will give you a live dashboard. In that dashboard, you're going to be able to see in real time how many people have taken the Freebie today? How many people are currently waiting? What's that average wait time looks like? Where are the hotspots? You get to see what we call a heat map. So you know where everybody's coming from, where they're going to. You can see all sorts of information, how many rides from a particular area, all of that information. How many males, how many females? What's the peak time per day, per week, per month? That data we give to you and your staff and whoever you want to have access to. And if you have any more KPIs that you want us to add, key performance indicators, we'll add them on and customize the dashboard for you. All of this is great because it helps you make data-driven decisions so that you can say, hey, you know what? Maybe we need to start earlier, we need to stop earlier, or we want to expand the geofence. There is no charge to expand or retract a geofence. It's just keeping in mind that if you go too far, your wait times might go up, so you may need more vehicles, or you've got to be mindful of that. And we work with you hand-in-hand with your staff to create the perfect service area. And it's not just guessing how many vehicles you need. Our technology, we have what I call tech toys. So we have simulators that will tell us, based on the level of service. What do I need my level of service? You tell me. What do you want the average wait time to be? Fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, ten minutes? Based on that, we're going to run a simulation and tell you, okay, Dania Beach, you need X amount of vehicles for fifteen-minute wait time. For twenty-minute wait time, you need this. And so that way, it's not guessing so that you don't have, you know, oh, people are waiting too long or any of that. It's really just a smart tech simul, simulation that we do for you. And so that's just part of the services that we do and that we offer. I wonder if I can show you. I don't know if this will let me do it from here. Maybe not. Nope, not. Now, how do I get back? I don't know. Well, I don't know how to get back from this screen to where I was. So anyhow, the following, thank you. Every, every one of those cities that you saw on that map, all of them started with a twelve-month proposed, you know, demonstration project, so it's a pilot project. It's twelve months, and that's low risk and low cost for you because we are a hundred percent turnkey. I'm taking all the risk. I'm buying the vehicles. We own the vehicles. They're our vehicles. And I don't know if you can see from our map, we just launched a new vehicle. It's the Volkswagen ID Buzz. It's the seats six plus the driver. They're super cool and they're electric. And so it's very roomy, and so we're super excited about those cars. We also have the Teslas. All you pay for as a city is the amount of hours that you want the rides to be, you know, going on. So, and you get the data collection. And by the way, the whole point of the pilot is for you to look at the data and say, wait a minute, what do we want to do? What's working for our city? Quick example, I live in the city of Coral Gables. We run ten to ten, seven days a week. And then we noticed that on Sundays, the ridership was dropping off after six P M. So we course corrected from six to ten. We took those four hours, and we added them to Friday and Saturday night, and now we end at midnight. You know, so once you decide how many hours you want to do, say you'd want to do seventy hours, however you want to distribute those hours is up to you. You don't have to come back to Commission. It's, hey, Claudia, can you please adjust our hours? And we'll adjust your hours. Usually takes me two weeks because of the scheduling that I have with our drivers, but easy things like that to do. We're here to help you, work with you. I also mentioned before the technology, we have ride pairing optimization. So if, you know, Mayor Davis requests a ride, and then Commissioner Llewellyn requests a ride, it's going to say, well, is it better to drop you off before we pick her up? It's not just ride sharing for the sake of ride sharing. It's all very smart, and it's going to do what's most efficient, so that's what that means. And then we help you with funding. So there are grants available to you. The FDOT grant pays for half, fifty percent of the total cost of the Freebie. We walk you through, hold your hand, help you apply for the grant to increase your chances of getting that. That happens in the spring. Award letters are going out right about now, right before Halloween. And again, we help you with all that. If you have any CRAs in your area, those are also entities that can help fund it. And then there's advertising. So if you want to, you know, let us advertise on the vehicles, that brings in funding, and we'll give you a fifty percent revenue share. And the last thing I want to talk about is our drivers. Our drivers are not independent contractors like you have with Rideshare. They are a hundred percent W-two employees. They work for Freebie. If they work full-time for us, they get health benefits and all that good stuff. We are considered public transit, so for those of you who are tech, you know, FDOT savvy, we have to conform to FDOT Code fourteen-nine-zero, which means I'm doing a deep dive on that background check. It's a Level Two background check. Health screenings, drug screenings, random drug testing. We even do sleep apnea studies. So when you get into a Freebie, you know you're getting into a safe ride. People are like, hey, are they failing the drug test? No, they're finding out they have sleep apnea, and they can't drive for us. So it's kind of funny, but yeah, they are very safe, and then it's always the same drivers. So you're going to learn their name, they're going to learn your name. We don't pull from other areas, so people feel comfortable. In fact, fun fact, seventy percent of our riders are women because they feel so safe in our cars. We've got cameras inside, forward, backwards, three-sixty. Our technology has route replay. So if you say, hey, I saw a car turning on a one-way street, I can see if that, exactly where they turned, all that good stuff. So with that, I just, you know, wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. There's so much more I could speak about, but I'm happy to have one-on-ones or answer any questions that may have come to mind while I was speaking.
Thank you.
Water?
You said ten minutes, huh?
Well, thank you, Claudia. Does the Commission have any comments or questions at this time? Okay, Commissioner Ryan.
Well, thank you. That was a great presentation, Claudia. I appreciate it. My question is, you know, for everybody else too. For the ride sharing, right, the optimization, is that required? Or could you have like a private ride if you wanted?
You could. As a matter of fact, we just launched Seminole County. And Seminole County is allowing some of their kids that are having, their high school students are doing dual enrollment at the State Seminole College. Whenever a sixteen-year-old rides, we can make it so that they ride by themselves or with another sixteen-year-old. So we have that in place for them, that it's working for everybody. But when a sixteen-year-old gets on, no one gets on until he or she is dropped off.
Okay, because you have your individual file, right? Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right.
Highly customizable.
I, I know we have a couple more questions, but if it doesn't come back to me, I just want to say thank you. And I, I wanted to bring this before the Commission because this is something that's definitely happening. A lot of cities already have it already, and I think it's something that could be beneficial for our city as well. So, you know, we don't have to do anything today, but at least we got the ball rolling. We could discuss it further and maybe have action on it later. But, you know, feel free to ask any questions you have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, and Commissioner Romoli.
Hey, thanks. Thanks, Claudia. I thought you were going to fall over there in a second. Not breathing. No, it was a great presentation. Very thorough. But I, I think, did I miss there was any kind of liability insurance? Did you mention any of that?
We did, we did, I did not mention it, but yes. So we are fully insured, and we fully indemnify the city. Yeah.
What's the amount of liability you cover?
It depends. So usually, I think it's about a million dollars, and then if you want us to have more, then we will.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question is.
Some cities require more.
Okay. So that you're flexible with it.
Absolutely. We do whatever needs to be done.
And I didn't, also did not see, or maybe I missed, the advertising on the manner or on the app. There's advertising. Is that advertising that's generated that pays or offsets the cost of running this?
It's free for the businesses. That's where, we're doing the free advertising. Now, if anybody wants to advertise on the vehicle, they can, and we'll wrap the vehicles. Like, we have, we have advertisers, national advertisers, like Coca-Cola, Pepsi, and we'll wrap the vehicle in that. And then whatever revenue comes in, we'll do a fifty-fifty split with you. Fifty percent of whatever comes in goes back to the city to lower your costs.
All right, so the advertisement, like where you saw the ten percent off Jackson's.
That's free.
That's free. But there was also a banner on the bottom of the app. That's free as well. Okay.
I mean, if you guys want us to, to put those out, we, we can. If you want us to charge for those, we can. I mean.
You can charge. I guess that's where I'm getting at, to offset some costs on the city side.
Well, I think a better idea, and then just, just kind of putting it out there because, since we're Freebie, right? It's because we're free. But we do charge, like in Seminole, we do have the ability to charge. So Seminole County, Monroe County, some of the cities in North Carolina, they do charge. You know, some of them do two dollars per ride, some people do two dollars.
I don't want to charge anybody. It's, it's the revenue generated from advertising that costs, our costs as a city. So the next question would be, how, who goes out and asks someone like grandpas for the discount? Do you negotiate that? Do you go and talk to them?
You mean, how do we come up with the deals?
Yeah, who gets, who's offering that percentage?
So our Economic Development Officers, we have, again, the manpower that goes out right before, a month before. Let's say we start service here, they go business-to-business, door-to-door. We work with the Chambers of Commerce and say, hey, Freebie's coming. If you want to participate, reach out, or we'll come visit you.
Perfect. So you would work with our chamber to try to get that out there?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Romoli. And anyone else? Okay, I will just say a couple of things because I did have the benefit of seeing this presentation at a little bit slower pace, but I, I do appreciate it, and you did such a thorough job. And we've talked, you know, in the past, and when we redid our strategic plan, we wanted to think of outside-of-the-box ways to have different modes of transportation, such as the micro-transit system. And, and I have spoken, because we have looked at this. I've spoke to, was it Mayor Roscoe in Key Biscayne? And I've had people like who have actually implemented Freebie into their cities to see how it's working for them, and they really did recommend to do a pilot program and see. And I'm wondering, do you have, Dania Beach is a city of about thirty-two, thirty-four thousand. Do you have like a similar program with a similar amount of population that you could give us as, or show us as an example going forward? And then I have one more question.
Yes, we're very happy to do the simulation that I talked to you about. We can do that ourselves and come back to you with the numbers, or we can do it with you on a call. We bring in our tech, and we show you, we'll go take a similar-sized city with a similar population, and we'll populate their service in there and show you exactly how, how long the wait times are, what you're going to need, so that you can make, you know, a data-driven decision before you start the service.
Okay, thank you so much. And then this would be for our City Attorney, just because I would want to make sure that we could, we would follow our procurement process with this, and that if we needed to go out to bid, or whether we could piggyback or something like that, I would want to make sure that we're doing it the right way because I do know you have competition, and we would want to make sure that we're following the, the process properly. So ordinarily, I'd say the first choice is usually to go out for bid because there are competitors out there, and the one that best meets our needs is the one you would want to choose. There is a piggyback, but again, because it's so customized, it may be hard to actually do a piggyback because whatever they do, you have to do. And if you want to customize it, you know, that's not really so much of an option with a piggyback.
Okay. So we follow a per hour, the way that we do it, we do have nineteen contracts that are piggybackable contracts. And so because we charge a per-hour rate, the focus is on the per-hour rate. So as long as your per hour is the same or less, then it's considered a piggybackable contract that you can do. And let's remember that piggybacking off of another contract, it's not skirting the RFP process. It's just borrowing an RFP process that somebody has already gone out, the same players, same competitors. And, you know, we're happy to say we just won competitively bid, Seminole County, Lynx, the transport provider for central Florida, Holly Springs in North Carolina, Monroe County, and so many others that we have just in the last five RFPs within the state of Florida. We have come out on top competitively. So if it does go out to bid, we're happy to compete for it, and we're just happy for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Fantastic. Excellent presentation. I believe that's all the questions we have, so thank you so much for that thorough presentation, Claudia.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And next, we have Item three point two, three point three. Proclamation approval for Florida City Week, sponsored by me, for October twentieth to twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have consensus for that? All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay? Okay, so Item three point three passes. And next, we have Item four point Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October two thousand and twenty-five, sponsored by me, but Commissioner Llewellyn has been kind enough to read it for us this evening. Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And interestingly, I'm, I'm actually part of a group that deals with legislation regarding domestic violence. So it's actually a very good one for me to be reading. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Dania Beach, Florida. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a national campaign held every October to raise awareness and support for survivors of domestic violence. For two thousand and twenty-five, the theme is "With Survivors Always." This theme emphasizes partnership with survivors to provide safety, support, and solidarity. And whereas domestic violence is a pervasive issue that transcends all ethnic, racial, and socioeconomic boundaries, and it is a pattern of behavior involving physical, emotional, sexual, and economic abuse perpetrated by an intimate partner. And whereas the home, a place intended to be a sanctuary, is often the site of domestic violence, making it a hidden crime with devastating impacts on individuals, families, and communities right here in our own. right here in our own city. And whereas each year in the United States, more than 10 million women and men experience physical abuse by their intimate partner, and 90% of children of domestic violence victims are eyewitnesses to these attacks, which may be a major precursor to fatalities from child abuse and neglect in the U.S. And whereas our law enforcement officers and victim advocates are committed to creating a safe and supportive environment for all residents and to working collaboratively with community partners to prevent domestic violence and provide support to survivors. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, our mayor Joyce L. Davis, mayor of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Dania Beach, and does express our sincere appreciation for those committed to promoting peace and preventing domestic violence in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Llewellyn, for reading that. It is important to stay aware and to make sure that we are keeping our city safe. And we will move on then to... We will move on to Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2025. We have a lot of pink in the house. I want to see all of my, is it class of 67? Addicts high class of 67, please stand up and give them a hand. And why don't you guys come on up? You've all come to celebrate a wonderful woman this evening who is being honored through our Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. So everyone who is here for that proclamation, just come on up and if you can. And then I will have our former mayor Bobby Grace say a few words right after. You guys can keep coming. I'll just start reading, but the proclamation is a little lengthy, so. Whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness of disease and the importance of screening and early detection. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor those we have lost, lend strength to those who carry on the fight, and pledge to educate ourselves and our loved ones about this tragic disease. And whereas we have great, whereas there have been great strides in combating and devastating illness of breast cancer, which is the second most diagnosed form of cancer in the United States. And whereas death rates from breast cancer have been declining, and the change is believed to be the result of an earlier detection and improved treatment. And whereas the exact causes of breast cancer are unknown, understanding its risk factors are essential to prevention. And whereas those who have a personal or family history of breast cancer are among those at greater risk of developing illness. And whereas early detection and getting recommended screening mammograms to help detect breast cancer early is the key to, in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas this month, we stand with those who have been affected by breast cancer, including former mayor Bobby H. Grace, city employees, and our Dania Beach citizens. We recognize the ongoing efforts of dedicated advocates, researchers, and health providers who strive each day to defeat this terrible disease. Now therefore, on the behalf of the City of Dania Beach Commission, I, Joyce L. Davis, mayor of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Dania Beach, and encourage everyone to educate themselves on the risk factors and get the recommended screenings. Thank you. All right, give yourselves a hand. We do want to take a photo with our breast cancer awareness crew here. And we will have you speak after that, Ms. Grace. I'll bring it down. Anna, do you want to get in the picture with the pink? Come on, you have a little pink.
Stop waiting, like we do at the point we age, you guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, and now we will hear from former mayor Bobby H. Grace. And there's always one more photo, always one more. To my sting colleagues that sit on the desks for the city of Dania Beach, the oldest city in Broward County, the first city, second to none other that has touched my heart all of these years. I appreciate the heart, warm, felt love that I receive in this room. Because in 2006, the doctors said I wouldn't be standing here. They gave up on me. Dr. Phyllis Nymark was my surgeon from Memorial Hospital. Dr. Alexander Perez was my breast cancer doctor. They worked miracles. It's been 19 years, and I celebrated on Saturday my 80th birthday. No one danced more than I did on the floor. Because it was a celebration of life, and that's what we have to do every day to celebrate. As you know, in the city of Dania Beach, we had the Relay for Life here for at least 10, 12 years. We raised over $670,000 for the Relay for Life. For those people that did not have the monies to have the services that they needed to fight this horrible disease called breast cancer, male and female. I am honored to be standing here, to still carry the torch and carry the baton to make sure that we understand the significance of us having the treatments that we need for breast cancer survivors. It doesn't start at 40 anymore, it starts at 20. Because as I was taking my treatments, there were women and men that were diagnosed with breast cancer at that age. This month, I have seven cancer events. And I, if God gives me the will, I'm going to do all seven of them. I'm halfway through it already. And I want to tell you that I have three tiers of my family here. I have my immediate family, will you please stand? My husband, my daughter, and my son-in-law. I have the addicts alumni, which I'm the youngest because they're in the 67. And I'm not going to tell you what year I am. Everybody knows that it's, please stand. And my adopted family that, since Tim Ryan was my person for the county commission, and everything had to go through Lucine, I made him and his family Baptist four years ago. You know, they went to every Baptist church that I can name. I just want you to know how much I appreciate it and you helping the residents of the city of Dania Beach. To this day, and especially Anna Garcia, who's our city manager, you gave me another family I didn't expect to have. But you gave me a family of 137, and it's called gracefully aging. And they are literally in my face on Tuesdays and Thursdays of every month. And they are doing such fantastic job. And they are out there and they are networking. And every city that we go into, everybody knows who gracefully aging is. Because we just don't sit in the building and do things. We go out and when we tell people, we're from Dania Beach and we're gracefully aging. Gracefully aging, will you please stand? As I take my seat, I just want you to know that I'm honored to be standing here as a cancer survivor. There are many women that are not in this room with me now. And I'm going to say this, Connie Bell is not here with us now. Rose Lozano is not here with us now. Gloria Fernandez is not here with us now. Fran Raguso is not here with us now. Shirley G. is not here with us now. Carolyn Wright is not here with us now. Etta Tannehill is not here with us now. And we all started in 2006, but I know that they're looking over us. Thank you so much and God bless you. Thank you, former mayor Bobby Grace, for that powerful, powerful testimony and bringing more awareness to the importance of early detection and a reminder of those who we've lost. I believe Carolyn Jones as well. Thank you. And next, we will have item 4.3, which is Cybersecurity Awareness Month, October 2025. That will be read by our city attorney.
This proclamation is from the office of the mayor of the city of Dania Beach, Florida. Whereas the digital age has brought unprecedented benefits to our society, transforming the way we communicate, work, learn, and play, while also introducing challenges to our security. Whereas the city of Dania Beach recognizes the vital role that cybersecurity plays in the continued prosperity and growth of our community. Whereas maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility. For every individual and organization has a crucial role to play. Whereas the frequency, scale, and sophistication of cyber threats continue to rise, targeting our infrastructure, businesses, schools, and homes. Whereas promoting education and awareness about cyber threats and the steps to protect our information and digital assets is of utmost importance. Whereas the city of Dania Beach IT department works diligently to provide awareness of cybersecurity and safety to the employees through annual trainings and continuous communications on new trends to be aware of. Whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Cybersecurity Alliance have designated October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, Joyce L. Davis, the mayor of the city of Dania Beach, does hereby proclaim October 25th as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Dania Beach, and encourages all citizens, businesses, and institutions to engage in activities that promote a safer and more secure cyber environment.
Thank you so much, city attorney. Yes, let's give it up for cybersecurity, yes. Come on, Daryl and the IT team who work so hard and help me out all the time. Thank you very, very much, Daryl.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, and city staff. On behalf of the IT division, I want to thank you for recognizing October as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in the city of Dania Beach. As Eve read, cybersecurity isn't just the job of the IT department. It's something we all share. Every department, every employee plays a key role in keeping our systems and information secure. And as technology evolves, so do threats, especially with the rise of artificial intelligence. Cybersecurity criminals are using more sophisticated threats, such as convincing phishing emails, realistic voice scams, and even deepfake videos to try to trick people to gain access to systems. So that's why awareness and caution are more important than ever. Additionally, like with all that being said, cybersecurity, typically people think of it only as businesses or government. People need to pay attention to that in their personal lives as well. Making sure that their passwords are strong for their email accounts. And if they have MFA or two-factor authentication, make sure that's enabled. Because if a password gets compromised, that additional step is key. And I really want to emphasize that. That second step is key in blocking hackers from getting into your accounts. So as I said, together by staying informed and working as a team, just as a city, but as a residents as well, we can keep Dania Beach safe and resilient from emerging threats. And thank you again for your continued support.
Thank you, Daryl. Hold on, thank you for all you do. I just have to also say, was it you who instituted the know-before system? That we all get those emails? And if we don't, you know, they keep on coming, and keep on coming, and keep on coming. And so I got tired of seeing them sometimes. So I went in and I actually did the course. And I want to tell you that they really are helpful. It really does make you think one more time before you see a link. It helps your mind to analyze these emails, because there's so much fraud all the time. You know, I have a friend who just, you know, if you're not looking at the emails, if you're not, and it just tells you so many little good things. And I have 100% so far, so I'm really excited about it. But thank you for all that you do to keep our technology in our city cyber safe. So thank you very much. Oh, yes. Come, come, get your award. Sorry, I mean your proclamation. Thank you once again, IT, for all that you do. And our final, everybody has a proclamation in October, it seems, and this is the very last one. It is Florida Cities Week. I know we all go to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. I'm honored to be on the board of directors. And October 20 through 26 is Florida Cities Week. So I will read that in honor of local voices making local choices. Whereas the city government is the city, whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and one of the most directly daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and dependent upon public commitment to understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Florida City Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government. And whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of Dania Beach, I, Joyce L. Davis, mayor of the city of Dania Beach, do hereby proclaim October 20 through 26, 2025, as Florida City Week in the city of Dania Beach, and encourages all citizens, government officials, and employees to participate in activities and events that recognize and celebrate Florida City Week, and encourage educational partnerships between city government and schools, as well as civic groups and other organizations. Happy Florida Cities Week. Thank you. Okay, that was the last one, I promised. Next, we have the item 5.1, Administrative Reports. Madam City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, city team that's here, residents, residents that are watching on TV, thank you so much. I'm going to go a little bit out of order here because I really... I'm gonna go a little bit out of order here because I really wanted to commend the effort and the teamwork of our police team, our Parks and Recreation team, our marketing and communications team. Because people see events, but they don't really know the behind the scenes. We hosted six thousand people here in our city this Saturday. That's larger than a lot of cities. Six thousand people here. I met with the chief, six pages just to cover our level of security. And a lot of that security information is information that's private between the chief and I. But safety and security is the number one objective of this mayor, this vice mayor, and this commission. So we continue to align our words with action. Cassie, our director of Parks and Recreation, Frankie, Anthony, Ifidi, Nanette, Suzette, the level of marketing and those connections of the people that are working here in this team are, and I keep saying the word unprecedented because it's a fact, it's a fact. To be able to see our very own Cassie on Deco Drive promoting, I mean, Deco Drive superstar over there. I mean, it's truly remarkable. Thank you, mayor, for acknowledging that. Thank you, everybody. You know, to be able to throw someone in the deep end of the pool without even them knowing how good they could swim, this is what we do here. So please continue to support our special events, but please know how much goes behind the scenes to promote, keep the people safe, and ensure a tremendous family and enjoyable atmosphere. When I wrote this report, we had sold four hundred tickets for the VIP. Today, I finally get the latest tally, eight hundred and thirty-four VIP tickets plus everybody together, six thousand people having a wonderful time. Oh, and on top of that, praying that it doesn't rain. You know, but truly remarkable. All of the elected officials were here. We truly had a lot of fun, and I just wanted to commend the team. I wanted to thank Principal Janet Giancarli and again, the entire commission. Our level of advocacy and standing up for our schools is unprecedented. We've been fighting literally for you, our residents, for our kids, for our teacher. And that Janet, beautiful, beautiful note with her beautiful handwriting. And just this past Thursday, I was with the mayor and commissioner Ryan at the Greater for Larger Alliance. And to have the confirmation from the superintendent of schools, Dr. Hepburn, that we are not closing Olson, we are not closing any of our schools in our city. I mean, that doesn't happen when you sit on the sidelines. That happens when you get home and you have literally no throat because you're fighting and in advocacy mode so much. And Superintendent Hepburn, thank you. And thank you for your appointment on a special committee to truly think outside the box. And for them to look at us as the city that we could show the other thirty municipalities how it's done, it really sends a loud message of what we're doing here together as a team. I'm very, very grateful for that. CW Thomas Park, another vision becoming a reality. By the end of this month, we will have our TCO and the transition from the old building to the new building will commence. This couldn't happen without Eleanor, Corinne, all our people working in our building department. And to really have a project stay on budget and on time, it doesn't happen everywhere, but it happens here because of the level of commitment and the responsiveness. So I want to thank, you know, Corinne and Eleanor because this is something that's going to be truly remarkable, this twenty-one million investment in our community. This is not just for kids, gracefully aging, for co-ed boards, and really bringing more and new activities and augmenting the quality of life for our residents here. We held a meeting with Calvi Giordano and Associates, the top-ranked firm for the design of Chester Bird Park. Again, the results of our advocacy in Tallahassee and the monies that have come in for Chester Bird, another new park coming in line for our community here. So we're very excited that they are working to finalize the pricing for the scope of services and to bring that contract before our city commission at the October twenty-eighth meeting is truly something that's very, very exciting for us. Our senior Parks team is seeking quotes to re-side and regrade Frost Park. That is a very heavy concentration in an area that's growing in population east of US One. Met Commissioner Ryan there and did a walkthrough with Anthony, Ifidi, and Cassie. And we're getting quotes as we speak, and we look forward to coming forward in the new year with some of those quotes. Because even though that park is set to come into play a couple of years, three or four years down the line, because of the impact and the amount of the people that are using that facility, we really think that it's a really good investment to come forward and find some monies to be able to make that happen. So we're very, very excited about that. The latest update that we received regarding the opening of Gulf Stream Road, I think Commissioner Llewellyn has me on speed dial in regards to Gulf Stream Road. So Gandio and I have spent more time in Gulf Stream Road, I think that in our own street where we live. But we're almost there at the finish line, had a great conversation with Mr. Joe Milton. So they're looking at the end of the month to be able to open Gulf Stream Road. So that's really very exciting. And the partnership that they've been having with COs to make sure that the driveway work and the work that Milton and associates have been investing in the driveway. So we're very excited. There's four items that are pending completion to be able to reopen the roads. And it's the south driveway entrance, the installation of the remaining drainage boxes on the north end of the street, the repair of the north driveway to COs, and the temporary striping. So we're almost there at the finish line, but we have been monitoring that. And speaking about monitoring, what can I say about Fernando Rodriguez, our director of Public Services, Sean Shutton? So the perfect storm of a full moon with king tide and a lot of rain, even with all the level of proactive efforts, we're going to have some level of flooding. But to be able to send our teams to go in there and relieve that and continue to be proactive, I mean, Saturday and Sunday, talking to Gandio, talking to the entire team that works there, kudos to you, Fernando Rodriguez, Sean Shutton, just fantastic. These are the behind the scenes people, but we really appreciate all those efforts. We are working very closely with Commissioner Remoli and Feeding South Florida and putting the last little details on our first annual serving joy food distribution event at PJ Millie for our residents. And this is going to occur on Monday, November the third, four to six P.M. Another event that, a new event in our city. Because we're just not satisfied with the sixty-nine ongoing projects that are going on. It's almost like an addiction to do more for our city. And that's what public service is all about, that by the end of the day, you just leave it on the court. And this is what we do here in Dania Beach, three hundred and sixty-five days, the entire team. On Wednesday, October the eighth, deputy city manager Candido Sosa Cruz, community development director Eleanor Orenna and I did a walkthrough of one-on-one Dania. What a remarkable project, what a remarkable project. And this weekend, Mr. Abbo was here, and I could already see Cassie speaking to him, and they want to get involved. They want to make sure that we work to augment, you know, Dania after dark and take it to Sterling Road. And already, they are aligning their words with actions. They want to be sponsors. And those are the community partnerships that we've done with Mr. Milton, we're doing now with Mr. Abbo. But as of today, there's one hundred and twenty-nine units under lease already and ninety-two occupied. So there's already over one hundred new residents here in our city and in our backyard. So we're very, very excited about that. What's really cool about that project is to live and work. You can actually have a beautiful one-bedroom apartment with a beautiful walk-in closet, beautiful bathroom, and then you can transition to your workspace. And if you haven't tried the smoothies and if you haven't visited the live-work unit, truly remarkable. They're amazing. And what's happening here, there's a lot of outside-the-box thinking and a lot of coordination and a lot of options. I was just telling, you know, the mayor just Thursday, you gotta go check out those studios. I've never seen a studio so big and a studio that usually it's just one whole room. No, this one has a private bedroom, just beautiful. And if we thought the art by Milton is amazing, wait till you see those beautiful hands. It's like, but to see people competing with each other because they care so much, they're aligned with what we're doing here in the team and what you all are doing here in the dais as well. So we're very, very excited about that project. As you're aware, FERDAP was not funded at all last year for anybody. It's the first time in the past five years that we haven't had a FERDAP funding for anyone in the state. So we're very excited. We've already discussed the plans to bring again forward the application for Dania Cove Park. And before we know it, we're back in Tallahassee again. So we're very, very excited to seize that funding again. And the long-awaited storm drainage project on southwest thirty-four terrace, again, monies that we got from Tallahassee and advocacy in Tallahassee. That project on thirty-four terrace right behind the Greek residence, the Greek restaurant has commenced, and we're already seeing the difference. So a lot of things going on in our city. Couldn't be more proud to be your city manager. And that concludes my report. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you for that excellent report, madam city manager, and for all the great news that you're sharing around our city. City attorney, do you have any comments?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, city attorney, city clerk.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Your next meeting is October twenty-eighth, which is just your city commission meeting at seven P.M. And then your one and only meeting for the month of November is on the eighteenth, starting with CRE at six P.M. And then your commission meeting at seven P.M. That's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. And I'm gonna go out of order, just chief, just for a second, because I see one of my original beach cleanup students out here from now, I knew him from elementary school. Now he is in Olson Middle School, and he has submitted a citizen's comment. And I know it's getting time and you gotta go to school tomorrow, so I'm gonna have you come on up, Mr.
Mic sec. Hello, city of Dania Beach. My name is Caleb Laroff. I'm a student at Olson Middle School. I walk home each day and see it is very unsafe at southeast Second Ave. and Eleventh Terrace. I feel like we need a freeway stop sign at this intersection. Many times, we have to yield to keep cars from hitting students. A freeway stop will also help slow down traffic that have, that has been speeding down Second Ave. since Dania has become so much more developed over in the recent years.
So thank you, good job, good job, Caleb, thank you. And it's great to see young people come out and engage and see and say what they see are concerns in the community and safety. And so the safety reports are coming right up next, and our very own chief, Jason Terrala, is up next. So this is the man who keeps us safe, and thank you for sharing your concerns once again.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. And to speak on you, young man, I will make sure that's taken care of, okay? I'll make sure we get our deputies out there, okay? You'll see them start on tomorrow, okay? So I'll start off, we had a really good arrest earlier this week. Our threat management unit, they were looking for a subject in our city, referenced multiple threats. They put our CST unit on the case, and we were able to identify and locate this individual. Once we're able to place that person in the custody, search into arrest based on our investigation, we were able to recover a AR-15 rifle as well as a Glock nineteen weapon that was utilized in the crime that we were arresting this individual for. Both those weapons were taken and confiscated in the safekeeping, and the individual was placed in the custody. Also, you know, we continue to do our checks at all the parks, which I know is a priority here for the city. Over at Chester Bird Park, we were doing, our CST team was doing an operation over there, watching the park again. And we observed the individual that we have arrested in the past leaving that park. We stopped him, and through our investigation, we were able to arrest him for possession of crack cocaine. And again, that's another good arrest, getting him out of the park. He was previously trespass on that park, so we had charges on him already, but we were able to get the additional charges of the possession of the cocaine. And again, we're out there being very proactive by Chester Bird and let them know that we're still out there doing our enforcement actions. I did want to highlight our successes that we've had just in the last week alone from the sheriff's office standpoint in the city. So first, I want to highlight in piggybacking off the city manager, the success of Oktoberfest. There is a lot that goes on that from, besides what the city does from the law enforcement standpoint. And I want to say, dealing with the city manager, obviously, she, me and her go back and forth with the security plan, but also dealing with Cassie and dealing with Ashley has been fantastic. And I want to let you know the partnership that we have here in the city is second to none. It really is, we're unified, we come together, we come up with a plan, we work together, and that's under your leadership, and it really works amazing. And you saw how great it was that night. We also, this past week, we had the five K run over at Dania Point in the morning that we were able to assist with, which we do every year, and make sure that was a great, safe event for everyone. We also had our Friday night and Saturday night Dania Point Ops going on. And we also have, which I'm not gonna name the hotels because it's an ongoing security plan that we have going on, we have two international soccer teams staying in our city right now. So there's a lot going on from a law enforcement standpoint just in the last seven days within Dania Beach. And I can tell you, everything's going off fantastic. And we also have the Jewish holidays, and we're continuing all of our area checks at the Jewish institutions. And lastly, I was going to give a little goodbye speech to our homeless outreach deputy Reyes. Everyone knows Deputy Reyes.
He's Cleveland.
Detective Reyes now. You know, it's an honor for me as the chief of the city, obviously, when any of my deputies get promoted. And everyone knows Deputy Reyes and what he's done for us on the homeless outreach team, especially Commissioner Llewellyn, who worked with him, Commissioner, I'm sorry, manager Garcia, who works directly with him all the time. You know, everyone knows how great he is. And he applied and he interviewed and he got selected for, to become a detective for the agency. And I'm very proud of him. Well-earned and well-deserved. Unfortunately, with him getting that position, he had to leave Dania Beach. He got selected to go to the city of Tamarack for their detective bureau. So I'm very sad to see him leave our city because I know what he's meant for all of us, but it's an amazing opportunity for him, and he's earned it. So he was gonna come tonight to say goodbye to everyone, but he's actually on a call-out now on his new position. So he did tell me to tell you, he plans on coming in two weeks to say goodbye to everyone because this is his home. He loves Dania Beach, and he does want to come personally, say goodbye to everyone. And that completes my report.
Thank you, thank you so much. Hold on just a second, chief, Commissioner Llewellyn.
Yes, and I actually did get a chance to say goodbye to Detective Reyes, who I have worked quite a bit with, and by the way, and also congratulate him as well. He's lost like seventy pounds.
Yes, a lot.
He lost a lot of weight. And I almost didn't recognize him. But he has been wonderful for the city. And if there's ever an opportunity in the future to bring him back, I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna throw that out there. So, because he has been, he's been very involved with all different aspects, not just the homeless outreach. But I actually had the opportunity, I went to court with him once on one particular case that's a little project, as we all know. And he really cares. So I'm very proud of him and I'm very happy for him, but I'm gonna miss him terribly because he's been so great for us.
I can promise you, the first opportunity I have to bring him back, that I will bring him back to the city. I promise.
Thank you so much, chief. You know, it's hard to lose him, but you have to be happy when somebody gets promoted. So that just means you've done a great job here, and we're so proud of everything that you do. So thank you so much.
And just so you know, we're doing interviews, we have seven people who put in for the And just so you know, we're doing interviews. We have seven people who put in for the position. So myself and Lieutenant Romano and Sergeant Yoder, we're gonna be doing, interviewing seven people to take his place. And obviously, that's a very unique position. It takes a very special deputy. So we're gonna do interviews, and then we'll select, I'll talk to the City Manager, and we'll select the right person for that position.
Thank you. Thank you. And up next, we have our very own BSO Fire Chief, Sergio Pelissero.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and the great citizens of Dania Beach. So I want to talk to you tonight real quick about the partnership that we have with DOT. Last week, we hosted an all-agency meeting at Fire Station 17. The incident management tabletop exercise that we did, it basically was a big discussion about all the new ramps that they're building that connect I-95 and I-595. Our units got to drive through the new construction zone so that we know how to get there. And if we ever have to help somebody on the highway, we're ready to go with all this new construction, because it could be quite confusing. I'll say something that Chief Tarala just spoke about, basically, the Dania Point 5K. It was awesome. I got, I had a great partner, so it was really a nice, easy walk. Mayor, thank you for holding my hand all the way through. It was awesome.
Best friend and buddy ever. Walking buddy.
My walking buddy. There you go. And then I would like to thank each and every one of you and the support I get from the city, because we just took new radios that came in, and all our units are getting equipped with all these, these new radios. They're very friendly. They have touchscreen technology, because you know, when we're out there on the field, we're wearing gloves. So the old radio was kind of hard to fumble around with, but now with these new radios, it's very easy. It's, they're very smart, so they update automatically. We don't have to worry about any of that. And next commission meeting, in the next two commission meetings, I'm gonna bring up our firefighter of the year that I'd like to present to you guys. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
We look forward to it as well, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for being my walking buddy. All right. Give it up for Chief. Give it up for our chief. All right. So I did already call on Caleb. Do I have any other citizen's comments of anybody else who did not get to speak from the public who wanted to make a comment? Okay, so we've gotten Item 7 completed, and now we will move on to Item 8, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the Commission wishes to pull from the Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to pass Item Point 8, the Consent Agenda.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? Second, the second from Commissioner Llewellyn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, the Consent Agenda passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. We will move on to Item 9, bids and requests for proposals. There are none. Item 10, quasi-judicial and public hearing items.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to do Item-
12.1 first.
And I could read both the Item 12.1 and the quasi-judicial, because it's all on the same property and same application?
Yeah, let's do that.
If you don't mind, okay.
You wanna do 12.1 first?
Yes. So it's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach approving amendments to the Dania Point Design Development Guidelines as to commercial square footage, number of hotel units, additional residential units, and other modifications to the guidelines submitted by Dania Live 1748 LLC, Dania Live 1748 II LLC, Spirit Airlines Inc., and Discount Auto Parts LLC for the property located north of Sterling Road, east of Interstate 95, and west of Bryant Road within the City of Dania Beach, provided for conflicts, codification, and an effective date. These are both community development items, and the resolution is a resolution of the City Commission approving the platnot amendment for the Dania Point plat submitted by Dania Live 1748, Dania Live 1748 II, Spirit Airlines, and Discount Auto Parts for the property located north of Sterling Road, east of Interstate 95, and west of Bryant Road within the city, provided for conflicts and effective date.
Okay, Corinne?
And both are public hearings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Deputy Director, Community Development. So the item that we're doing first is second reading of, for Dania Point, which is establishment of the DDGs, the amendment to those DDGs. And this is second reading. I made a full presentation at first reading. I can review that presentation if you like, but the applicant is here, and they're representative as well. So I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, this is a- And do you want to also just do the plat, so you can do it all at once, one public hearing and-
We can do that?
Yeah.
Okay. The other item is the platnot amendment for the DDG, I'm sorry, for the development itself. They're proposing to change the platnot, which affects the square footage of commercial, square footage of office space, the number of hotel rooms, and mid-rise residential units. They are decreasing the commercial, decreasing all of those. They're increasing the hotel, but decreasing the others. And they're playing with these numbers a little bit in order to maintain the number of trips that will be generated by the project, so that the roadway capacity still exists. I think that sums up my presentation. We're recommending approval of both, and the applicant's here to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this item from the public? All right, then, Mr. Mealy, if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you, Dennis Mealy, 200 East Broward Boulevard, on behalf of the applicant. As Corinne said, it's a second reading of the DDG amendment. There's been no changes since the first reading. And the platnot amendment, we talked about it at the first reading as well. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions from the Commission? Do I have a motion?
And if we could have two motions, one for the second reading ordinance and then the resolution on the plat.
So just do one at a time?
Yes.
Okay. So for Item 12.1, Commissioner Llewellyn?
Make a motion to approve Item 12.1.
Do I have a second? Vice Mayor?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, Item 12.1 passes. Then we will move back to Item 10.1. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Make a motion to approve Item 10.1.
I have a motion from Commissioner Llewellyn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, Item 10.1 passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all. Then we will move on to Item 11, which is first reading ordinances. We have none. We already did Item 12.1, so we will move on to Item 13, discussion and possible actions. We have none. So we will move on to appointments and Item 14.1, City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a few appointments. We have the Green Advisory Board, which is a vacancy that needs to be filled by Vice Mayor Salavino. And then we have an Education Advisory Board vacancy and a Marine Advisory Board vacancy that needs to be filled by Commissioner Ryan.
Okay. Does anybody want to speak on their board appointments, or just wanna? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Received some online submissions for the advisory board. One came in early, so, and seemed to stay in contact, but came in earlier. Actually, actually from last year, but the board was full. So I'd like to ask if we can take this person and make, appoint her and contact her to see if she's still interested. If not, I have a backup. Okay, her name is Marlene Sunzun Igu. I'm not sure how to spell, say it, but that's-
And you said she was interested last year, you said?
Yeah.
She submitted a form? Okay.
She had submitted a form, but it's, my comments here were very interested in serving.
Okay. We can double-check with her and see if she's still interested.
Is that okay with everybody here?
Yep.
I'll retain these other backups. If she's not, then I have, I have one more behind it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
You want to pass that down to her, so she can? I do have a comment on the advisory boards, if I could, Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you very much for our deputy clerk, for getting me some information from the request I had last time. Reviewing those, that most, it's pretty impressive, this compared to before. There's a lot of present people that show, I mean, they're showing up a lot. There's a few absences. There's a few excused absences. But one board that I saw that even though they're showing up, might start to be getting a little bit weak, and that's the Marine Advisory Board. And with that, I think that we need to find out who's in charge of Marine Advisory Board. I've had a couple of comments from them stating that we may need to, you know, help them a little bit. I don't know what the request is, because they haven't come to the meeting. But I think it's something that we need to address, because looking at the last, even the second quarter report, and I haven't seen the third quarter report yet, that they, they're not, I think they're starting to fade. And we don't want that to fade, because it's a very, very important board. And, you know, some of the things that they might want to request, that we might be able to work with the Sheriff's Department on as far as the, you know, waterway patrol, you know, there's always next year's budget, but we have to make sure that we have something going on there, maybe possibly get grants in the meantime. But it's something that I think we need to look at, and so I don't know whose position is to contact Marine Advisory Board, but we need to have, I think, some report on, from them, and any requests they might have, or anything we can do to work with them and ask them what their needs are.
We can work with a liaison to maybe put something on their agenda to specify what they're looking to do, what their wants and needs are, so then we can, we can address those needs and see who their proper contact would be, depending on what they're needing.
I can tell you, the people that are on there are very good at that Marine Advisory Board. I just think they might be getting a little bit down the dumps, okay?
Yeah, we can work on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Ryan, did you have comments, or just, hold on?
Yeah, thank you. I have two vacancies on the advisory board. I could fill the Education and the Marine Advisory Board. I'm just waiting for the final commitment, but I have both of them filled, and I'll give you, I'll give the clerk the information after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, I actually, through the mayor, have a question for our City Attorney. Didn't we have an issue with our last appointee to planning and zoning?
I'm, uh-
We're still working on that.
No, the gentleman that you wanted to do for West Row, from what I understand, we, I didn't have a problem with him, and I talked to his firm. His firm may have a problem.
Okay, so-
But they haven't gotten, definitively gotten back to me on that.
Okay, so we'll wait and see if they do. For the time being, he's still on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn and City Attorney. Commissioner Romoli?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also have a question on the PNC board. Brandy Oliver, who was my backup appointment there, I believe, she's moved out of town, correct, City Clerk? I think you got an email from her.
What was her name?
Her name's Brandy Oliver.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, because she was on the Green Advisory, and I think that's why she's no longer on there. She's moved out of town. So if we have an issue with the other person as a backup, and we have no Brandy, we're like slim pickings right now, so we should try to find at least one additional backup, just in case. Can we maybe put it on the next meeting?
We could put it on the next meeting. If you, in the meantime, if you can try and think of somebody to have as a, just in case.
I mean, I know we had a couple of applications. One came in from a resident that called me. I don't know if she'd be interested in that, so I don't want to make any presumptions on that. But I think, putting on the next agenda, we can come up with some names and then maybe appoint someone.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to Item 15, Commission comments, and we will begin with Commissioner Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna keep it fairly brief tonight, because I think we're all very excited that this has been a fairly short meeting. And I'm sure the people will speak longer than I do. Just to reiterate, Dania After Dark was a roaring success, as it has been, and every year it seems to be getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And more people from other cities as well showing up, which is good to see, that people are coming to explore what's going on in Dania Beach. And I love every month seeing Cassie on Deco Drive. It's fun. It's always fun. And I'm like, I know that voice. What's going on? Okay. But yeah, no, it was really, it was really good, and ran very smoothly. I mean, there literally, there were no problems. There were no issues. And, you know, and it's, it's a beer-drinking event. It's Oktoberfest, and still no issues. I was very impressed with that. So everybody seemed to be having a really great time, and it was nice to see some new faces. I also want to reiterate the Broward Schools issue, and although I'm happy to hear that Dr. Hepburn has said that Olson is safe. When, I actually did go, as to the mayor, to the workshop that they had last week and spoke on behalf of our city and our schools. And, you know, I basically said to them, I appreciate the fact that it looks like Olson's off the chopping block again. But they were on it again at the beginning of the year, and continuing to do this is absolutely not good for the kids. It's not good for their parents. It's not good for the enrollment. And you're gonna keep seeing this vicious cycle occurring over and over again, until they figure out some other way to, to cut their spending and, or get funding from other sources, because continuing to threaten to close schools does nothing except make parents want to take their kids out of those schools. And so the advocacy that we have been doing for the last couple of years needs to continue. Every chance I get, I'm contacting our board members. I am speaking with them on the phone. I'm meeting some people here and there for coffee and just chatting about what's going on, and trying to give them ideas, better ideas than what they've been doing, because just simply closing schools is not necessarily the answer, especially when our residents are still gonna be paying $50 million a year in taxes to the school board, regardless of whether it's two schools or three. And we haven't seen a whole lot of upgrades going on at those schools either. So we need to make sure that we're holding their feet to the fire and continue with it. Last thing I want to talk about, and this is a positive, a very positive thing. I was invited by the Estates of Fort Lauderdale Women's Club to come and speak on women in leadership and kind of talk to the women who were there about, you know, the importance of being leaders and how you can be leaders and that sort of thing. And of course, because these are residents, issues came up that were related to city things and, you know, complaints and whatnot, but the majority of them were not complaints. They were actually compliments on our city staff, on our city management team, on the work that's being done in the city. In particular, there was one woman who talked about the fact that we had this flood back in 2023, and they knew that there were people on site for days, trying to help them clear out the problems, and came in, that we came in and basically cleared out the drainage system and helped them with that. And they said that ever since then, they still have some flooding issues, and they expect that, but it's 100% better than it was, and they really appreciated it. And I wanted to throw that out there, because I think that's a testament, again, to our Public Works Department, our Deputy City Manager, who I know was on the ground there a lot, but as well as our City Manager and our city management team, for making sure that the right people are in place and getting the right resources, because I know there was, one of the things they said was that we were on the news a lot. And there was also that, you know, all the pump trucks and everything, and I know, I know that was you, Anna. I know you had a lot to do with getting the attention out there. So I wanted to thank you all for that, because it's nice to go to one of these meetings and have people complimenting the work that's being done. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Yay. Next, we have Commissioner Romoli.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Llewellyn was talking about, because the first thing on my list was to personally, again, thank our Deputy Manager, Candido Fernando Shawn, Public Works. I, I don't know, I think I've become like the dawn of Southeast 5th Avenue, because I continually get phone calls, email, text messages from residents when they have concerns about flooding or any issues, closing streets when it gets, the water gets too high. And I gotta tell you, all I have to do is send a text message, and that team is on it. In fact, the residents would call me back and say, where did they come from? Because they got there so quickly. And I know I'm a pain in the, you know what? Because I keep sending these things over and over and over again, and sometimes it's the same people that are calling. But you guys rock. Your whole staff is amazing. But I do want to call one particular person out, and I want to read something that a resident wrote to me. Chris, I don't know Chris's last name, but Chris happened to go to this resident's house. It's over by one of the pumps that are off of Southeast 5th Avenue, and someone else that was with him. But her message is, Chris and an up- "Chris and another wonderful gentleman from the city were out working on the pump station this morning. Chris was petting my dogs and we were chatting even before he realized it was my house. He was apologizing for the mess and the grassy swale on Fifth Avenue. When he realized it was my house, he was telling me that he had been straightening out the stones because he noticed that they had been disrupted when city workers had been there. He was so sweet and apologetic. We had a nice conversation. I assured him that I knew it wasn't him and he wasn't doing it." "It really is not a majority of the ones who park out there that create the mess, but I just so appreciate the entire city and how sweet he was." So these are the kinds of, of things that, that our residents see because our team is so awesome and they get out there and they work with our, our residents and they really engage with them. And I just want to thank again, Candido, Sean, Fernando, your entire team. You guys are amazing. Thank you very much. And I'm gonna keep sending text messages. I also want to, again, a shout out to Cassie and your team, Frankie, for an amazing job on Oktoberfest. I apologize for some of my dance moves. But I, I actually spent a couple of hours extra in bed the next morning because I was hurting. But I promise not to do that again. Well, maybe not so bad. And I also, I really wanted to attend this year's 5K run over at Dania Point, but I was not able to do that because I made a promise to Dominic, who runs the Italian-American club here in Dania Beach in Hollywood. And they had a rededication of Christopher Columbus over at the Port Everglades Administrative Offices. Chip Amarka was there, Peter Hernandez from Hollywood, and several other commissioners from Broward County were there. And it was a really sweet and great event. And I was really happy to have been there representing our city of Dania Beach. And they even got an opportunity to speak and, and talk about our city. And, and Dominic is, is a resident in one of our Meadowbrook buildings and he's also very active in our chamber. And he's such a great guy, so I was really happy to be there. So if he's listening, thank you Dom again for the invitation. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Romoli. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, let's rewind back to yesterday for the civic sign ceremony. That, that was great. I know that we're gonna add maybe one or two more civic associations. I know the Dania Beach Improvement Committee is missing out, but we'll get them up there. And I want to mention, I didn't mention this yesterday, but Richard Abbe, who lives in Dania Beach, has been here forever. He, he was the one who approached me with that idea maybe like an hour, a year and a half ago? A year and a half, two years ago? And it was great to finally see it come to fruition. So I just wanted to give Richard a shout out for, you know, sparking that idea and getting it moving forward. And thanks to the whole commission for approving it. Thanks city staff. And Parks Erect did an awesome job. Landscaping looks great. It, it's nice. You can notice it already. Dania After Dark was, was a great success from, from what I could tell. And the 5K run was right after, so you got to burn some calories the very, very next day. And the 5K turned out great, so we're kicking off the fall season in a great way and looking forward to all the fall events that we have lining up. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Vice Mayor Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. Everything that Lori said, Louis said, and AJ said. So you don't have to hear me repeat it, but the one thing is though that I do want to say is that I do want to thank all the staff, the city manager and down the line to every, how well everything was running on the Dania After Dark. It was very, very impressive. I, I could not believe how many people were there and it's great to have this kind of event in our little city that's getting so well-recognized. And, you know, manager, you guys have got a great staff working for you. That's all I can tell you to do the job, pick them out. But I just want to thank all of them for all the hard work they did because without them, it would not be happening. So that's, I mean, everything else back to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I won't repeat everything either, but I do want to tell a little story because people are coming from all over the Tri-County area to the Dania After Dark to Oktoberfest. I do want to thank the city manager and Parks team because we had Evan Piper, who is a wheelchair-bound resident in the city of North Miami Beach trying to get here. And so it was last minute and whatever we could do to help our, you know, ADA, our handicapped residents who want to come out and participate, they were right on it. And whatever we needed to do to be able to make him comfortable, they were willing to do and got right back to me. So I appreciate how quickly you all respond and how quickly you move in order to get things done and to accommodate people of all different needs. Fourth Annual 5K Fun Run Under the Sun, it was absolutely sold out, just as was Oktoberfest. We are doing sold-out events. Lululemon was the sponsor for that and people came from all over. We, some of the lifeguards couldn't even register because it was sold out. But our 5K walking club came out. They showed up. They showed out. We had about twelve people. We couldn't get a picture all at the same time, but we were there. BSO Fire, fourth year in a row. It's just really taken on a life of its own and to be able to kick that walk off every year for four years is just a great honor. And they always do a great portion. They gave over six thousand dollars to the Alzheimer's Association from that, from the proceeds from that race. And so that's very near and dear to my heart. And I want to thank Dania Point for being such great partners to the city of Dania Beach and always figuring out a way to give back to our community. Other than that, I want to say shout out to the Lions Club and shout out to all the service clubs and shout out to Commissioner Ryan for spearheading the service club sign. I loved being able to, you know, show that this is a city that values service. And so that was a long process and thank you for bringing that to our city. And thank for Rich for a long time ago doing that as well. Next, we have the, I'm just gonna go off and just not repeat everything, but I want to say thank you and congratulations to Lou and Joy Mashakos. They are the owners of Lucky Fish and they did invite us. They have opened up a new venue called Lucky Lou's and it's in Dania Beach, I mean, it's in Deerfield Beach. But they did invite us and they are expanding. So any ideas that we have for Lucky Fish, they're always willing and able to implement that. And lastly, I attended a grand opening of Face Foundry, which is a new facial spa opening in Dania Point along with the Dania Beach Chamber of Commerce. So our businesses, our parks, our city is thriving on all cylinders. It is a great privilege to work with each and every one of you. I thank you so much for all that you do. And one more thing?
Absolutely. Just one thing. I did reach out to the law firm that with the resident for the PNC and he can participate on the board.
So we got a new board member?
And I want to just clarify that that was replacing her spot. So yes, yes, it was. Yes, I confirmed with Aaron. So that, he was her replacement. So then we should be good.
All right, we're good, we're good. All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everybody.